James City County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting to order on February 28, 2023 at 1:00 PM. Ms. Stevens, you call and roll, please, sir.
And Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. McGlynn?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Larson's father, as you know, passed away Sunday, and she had said she wouldn't be here today, so I certainly keep her in our thoughts and prayers as she goes, her and her family, through that during the coming days and weeks.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and of course, certainly joining in offering condolences to Supervisor Larson. I know it's been a very difficult challenge over the last several years, and know that she has a lot still ahead of her to deal with, and wish her the very best in that regard, and offer any kind of support that we can to her. I also wanted to take a moment, and Chairman, thank you for, first of all, notifying me of this tragic event, the death of Delegate Mike Mullen and Rebecca Mullen's four-month-old son earlier. There's no question that it's hard for any of us to understand the impact of the loss of such a young child, but unfortunately, it does happen with some frequency, and it can be devastating for folks. But I will say that in terms of this community, it has wrapped its arms around Delegate Mullen and Rebecca, wishing them the very best in terms of memories of a child whose spirit was very much alive in the photographs that they shared on Facebook, and the discussions that we had with them before the baby tragically passed away. It is, of course, an exceptionally difficult time, and simply want to express on behalf of the board and the county, the deep sympathy that we have for the Mullens at this time, and the entire family, and to wish them only good memories of the times that they did share with that young Peter, and say that this community is there to support them in any way that they may need. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, before we go any further, if we could have a moment of silence for both Ruth and Mike's family.
Okay, next, we'll move into presentations, and we're going to switch the presentations, okay with the board. We've got some members there from Rebecca Van Root's group of the benefit program, so we're going to take them from four and bring them up to number one. Hey, Rebecca, how you doing?
Thank you, I really appreciate that. So, yes, February, I'm a little, I'm on the last date of February, but it's always a good time to come and see you all, and talk about my wonderful staff who support our benefit programs. So, February, the month of February in Virginia is Benefit Specialist Program, sorry, Benefit Program Specialist Appreciation Month, and so I here today to talk with you about how we deliver those programs here in James City County. I do have some staff here with me today, so I would like to recognize Ms. Diane Finney, she is our Chief of Benefit Programs, Lorraine Brown, she is actually our childcare daycare specialist, Nisi Jones, who is one of our family, our benefit program supervisors, Dominique Morissette, who's another supervisor, Brooke Cahilly, and Louise Key, who are specialists. So, they are just a few of our 20-plus staff who deliver our benefit programs, which is our SNAP, our Medicaid, our TANF, our childcare, our FRAUD, our Energy Assistance, all the programs that help support our families who are lower income and who are struggling during this time. As you all know, during COVID, there was a very large increase of individuals and families who had never received benefit programs before, who had to come and talk to us and get approved for those services. And as we come out of the pandemic, we are going to experience the unwinding of one of those programs, which is Medicaid. So, Medicaid, as you all know, with the public health emergency ending, individuals who received, who began to receive Medicaid were not redetermined for their income until just now. So, starting in April, all of those cases, and here in James City County, that is 7,391 cases, which is 12,707 recipients, will all have to be redetermined to see if they still qualify for Medicaid. So, that is a ginormous task that these ladies and their counterparts will be undertaking. So, I believe it's no time like the present to appreciate all the work that they do for us. And just to give you a few other statistics, our SNAP cases, which is our Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, formerly known as Food Stamps, we have 2,433 cases in James City County, and that represents 5,117 recipients. We do also have a call center, which is dedicated to answering questions that individuals have regarding their benefit program cases, and in the month of January, there were 1,236 calls, and in half the month of February, there were 726. So, we get a lot of traffic, a lot of calls, and we handle a lot of programs. I'm very proud of the staff and the hard work they do. We see people in their darkest hour, and we help assist them and get them on their way to the support they need. So, it's oftentimes a thankless task, so I really appreciate you all honoring and proclaiming February as Benefit Program Specialist Appreciation Month.
Thank you. I have a proclamation to read to you on this February 2023 as Benefits Program Specialist Appreciation Month, whereas James City County Department of Social Services has provided a level of economic stability to most vulnerable citizens of the county by administrating the Benefits Program of Supplement Nutrition Assistance SNAP, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families TANA, Medicaid, Childcare Auxiliary Grants, and Emergency Assistance. And whereas Benefits Program Specialists in the James City County Department of Social Services continues to serve families that may be eligible for benefits programs while promoting individual self-sufficiency and personal responsibility. And whereas James City County, 27 Benefit Programs staff have all been at the forefront of public effort to ensure that those qualified for social services receive the continued, receive and continue to receive them, and whereas 394 TANA recipients, 90 VIEW recipients, 5,000, excuse me, 117 SNAP recipients, 12,707 Medicare recipients, eight auxiliary grants recipients, 1,826 Energy Assistant households, 344 childcare households, one IVE child under 17 in foster care are served through the Benefits Program and depend on the dedication and commitment of the Benefits Program Specialists who handle their cases in an accurate and timely manner. And whereas Benefits Program Specialists are continually facing with reconciliation as environmental of rapid-changing policies and procedures, and whereas Benefits Program Specialists provide ethical public service, respect human dignity, demonstrate personal integrity, promote professional excellence, and are responsible for the application of current policy and guidelines. Now therefore be resolved, I, the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, do hereby commend all Benefit Program Specialists in James City County Department of Social Services and proclaim February 2023 as Benefits Program Specialist Month. In witness there as undue, I set my hand and cause the seal of James City County of Virginia to be affixed this 28th day of February. Very good.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you, Dean. Thank you. Come on up here, board. Would y'all come up too? All right, next on presentations, Colonial Soil and Water Conservation. Mr. Lud, how you doing, sir? Welcome back. Always a pleasure.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, members of the board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman. I'm Bob Lund. I'm one of two people elected from James City County to represent us at the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District. And with me this afternoon is Jim Wallace, our district manager, and Robin Woolsey, our urban conservationist. I'll provide a brief report about our accomplishments and efforts in James City. Our annual report for fiscal year 2022 should be in your board package and is available on our website, and I welcome your questions. And let's see. There we go. Districts support voluntary conservation efforts. The 825-square-mile Colonial District is home to about 175,000 people. We continue complementing our agricultural conservation focus with increased urban and suburban roles. Local government funding and grants enable us to offer more than the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation Cost Share programs. James City has about 3,150 acres of farmland. This map illustrates agriculture in James City County, with mainland farm and a horse paddock surrounded by suburban development. The Virginia Agricultural Cost Share Program helps to fray the cost of conservation practices on James City farmland. Facilitated practices shelter topsoil from erosion and reduce nutrient runoff into our watersheds, thus both protecting farmland for future generations and our waterways for fishing and swimming. We are focusing on new shoreline stabilization practices now available for farms. Reducing sediment and other nutrient fuels to our waterways diminishes incidence of algae bloom, which can cause fish kills and be toxic. Conservation planning to address Bay Act issues is an example of necessary technical support and training, no longer state-funded. The Jamestown team advanced from regional competition to state level, where they placed first in the aquatics topic and second in the special issue environmental topic and oral presentations. The district also facilitated access to lower-cost camp experiences via forestry camp, provided technical support for school and community gardens, and classroom conservation education, such as advising the Stonehouse Farm Club and the Community Garden in Grove. We provide a valuable conservation resource with unique technical knowledge and tailored programs, complementing other sources of advice and education. The Colonial District created Williamsburg Community Growers and continues to provide both technical and grant funding support. Williamsburg Community Growers educates the public about benefits of producing and consuming locally grown produce, conservation practices, and provides gardening space for over 100 individuals and organizations. The past three years, over 12,000 pounds of fresh, locally grown produce were provided to eight community organizations in low-income neighborhoods. Dozens of field trips and educational opportunities with our schools were facilitated. Wokely grown produce was provided for farm-to-school cafeteria programming, and real conservation opportunities to protect our natural resources were demonstrated. I want to thank James City County and Dominion for use of the land, 38 donors and other supporters, and volunteers, for more than 14,500 hours of their time contributed the last three years. Virginia Conservation Assistance Program addresses code-compliant properties. Since 2019, interest in VCAP generated 109 more Colonial District site visits in James City, enabling additional one-on-one conservation education and technical assistance. Supported practices redirect or manage rainwater so it soaks into the ground, improving groundwater reserves or is used by plants, thus reducing stormwater contribution to floods, erosion, and pollution of our ponds, streams, and rivers. It focuses on smaller projects than James City usually does, and can provide complementary cost-share funding to other programs, such as James City Clean Water Heritage programs. Our urban conservationist now also serves on the statewide VCAP Program Steering Committee, influencing program policy improvements. During the past years, these included significantly increased cost-share rates and caps, making VCAP more beneficial for our residents. We are also a non-voting member of the James City Stormwater Programs Advisory Committee, providing technical advice on request. Environmentally responsible lawn care includes applying the right amount of fertilizer based on a soil test result and using irrigation systems efficiently to minimize wasted water. Just enough fertilizer improves swim and fishability by reducing nutrient fuel stimulation of algae blooms in our waterways. Three Colonial District staff members are state-certified in turf and landscape nutrient management. Turf Love hosted other public educational events focusing on responsible and general lawn care throughout the year, including, among others, at the Toronto Open Air Market and James City County's annual Phyto Fest. Okay. Shoreline Evaluation Program helps shoreline owners understand Virginia code changes, establishing living shorelines as the preferred solution for shoreline erosion control, and VCAP Cost Sharing Financial Support for Living Shoreline Projects. A key objective is educating shoreline owners about current or potential threats to their shoreline and opportunities to help improve water quality. A visual inspection for problems such as erosion, other soil loss, invasive species, or lack of vegetation informs a report of issues and recommendations to the shoreline property owner. Turf Love advice and a nutrient management plan will be offered for any lawn. The Colonial District greatly appreciates the generous donation of their time by Master Gardener Water Steward volunteers, financial support from James City County, and Virginia Institute of Marine Science staff assistants with program development and training. This lists James City County Stormwater and Resource Protection Division support, combined with that of James City Service Authority for these programs this past fiscal year, completing June 2022. We appreciate James City County continued support for these programs, which so far this fiscal year facilitated the district in James City County, completing 70 more Turf Love nutrient management plans with another 11 under development, completing three more Turf Love educational events and scheduling another two, making eight more Virginia Conservation Assistance Program site visits, completing two more Virginia Conservation Assistance Program installations, securing approval for a third, and securing another application under consideration, and completing two Virginia Conservation Assistance Program inspections. I re, I did something wrong. Bear with me a minute. Okay. I respectfully request your continued support of these programs for James City residents and organizations, so we can continue contributing to preservation and improvement of our county environment, including swim and fishability of our local waterways for recreational and other uses benefiting both our residents and tourists. I'll try to get it right this time. We hired a full-time outreach specialist to improve our ability to reach landowners, residents, and other organizations about offered programs such as Turf Love, Virginia Conservation Assistance, Shoreline Evaluation, and Virginia Agricultural Cost Share. We also hired two, bringing us to three full-time staff supporting agricultural programs, including the new Rural Investment to Protect Our Environment Grant. The Colonial District is a resource with unique knowledge and tailored programs, complementing others, given continued support. We continue working with partners and participating in pilot programs to enable better service to James City. Efforts to seek grants to complement public money, local funds can help strengthen our grant applications, which also require matching contributions. Wish I wouldn't stumble so much. Daryl Cook now also serves as an Associate Director with the district. James City benefits, for example, at our beach park from things not listed and done elsewhere, such as upstream, and tourism benefits regionally from things done even further away, including downstream. The Colonial District offered conservation programs contribute to achieving 2025 federally mandated Chesapeake Bay water quality improvements. In closing, I want to again thank James City County Stormwater and James City Service Authority for their support over the years, all our other partners, program participants, and volunteers who so generously give of their time. This concludes our presentation. Are there any questions? And if not, if not, thank you for your attention.
Mr. Chairman, I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to express appreciation for the great work that the district is doing. Our elected representatives, Mr. London and Mr. Hall, both served well, and of course, Mr. Wallace and Ms. Woolsey, both are dedicated professionals, serving us. I think the most remarkable thing is the way in which you managed to make every dollar grow, which I know you're involved in a lot of growth, but that's an area in which you have demonstrated that you work very hard to build on existing programs and to find new programs that benefit the community, and where a little bit of our money can be a way for us to leverage a lot more money from other places to accomplish some good things. So, thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome, and thank you for those kind words.
Thank you. All right. Recent election presentation. Ms. Mormon. Yes? I was like, you were over there. Glad to see you.
Good seeing you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, and Mr. Stevens. Welcome to the 2022 Year in Review. It's a bit delayed, but nonetheless, it actually happened, and it's been an adventure, so let's go. We have moved, that is the vote center. We are no longer located at the recreation center for early voting, and our office has also moved. We are now wholly contained at the 4095 Ironbound Road location. That is directly behind the courthouse, just off of Monticello. It's much more accessible, and we now have a good amount of parking with the overflow that includes the courthouse. Number of registered voters. It has increased considerably. This timeline is within the four-year timeframe on the left-hand side, historically back to 2007, with like-election years. So, you can see that our registering counts have bumped from 37 So, you can see that our registrant counts have bumped from 37,000 all the way up to 64,000, and we continue to grow. It is, we also have the list maintenance that has plus and minus our registrant counts by well over 2,000 each time that happens, and that happens after a federal election Voter registration. You say, what do we do in the rest of the timeframe besides those two days a year or three days a year? And this is one portion of our office that we have been, that we are responsible for, for voter registration. Information updates. 19,201 requested cancel, almost right at 4,000. That is because they moved out of state, they have requested to cancel for personal reasons, or if we have to cease voters. That number falls within that category. Denied applications. That is because somebody has applied because they are a felon, judgmentally incapacitated, or because they simply submitted 1, 2, 3, 4, 18 different applications to register to vote. Every single time we have somebody that registers to vote that many times, we have got to process every single one of those applications, which takes us to 985 duplicate applications. And then miscellaneous transactions is 171. Excuse me. Total transactions for last year, just for the voter registration side of things, we did almost 25,000. Redistricting. You may have received one or two or three voter cards in the mail. One of those was at James City County's expense, and that was because we were required to do it. We were one of the forefront localities across the state that actually got our redistricting done in the early process. After that time, the legislature decided that they were going to pay for voter cards for the entire state so that everybody would equally get the voter cards, and localities were not tasked with that, that income. And so, we were, and I said, why are we spending this money? Can we just go ahead and say we sent it out? And they said, nope, you're included as well. So, a second mailer went out. And then we had to go through, and we had one simple correction and a few streets. It didn't adjust anybody's voter representation or anything else, but we had to shift that. And again, that would have been our third mailing that we had to handle. So, voter cards have certainly gone out, and people may assume that they're just letters, but those are the voter cards that we had. The redistricting, we did as minimal invasiveness as possible, and we tried to keep the precincts all the same so that there was as minimal voter confusion as we could have. We were forced, each of the districts, we had to arrange within 500 voters of each other between the five districts. And so, that is why we had to make sure that we redistricted, shifted the lines up in order to make that accommodation, and I'm sorry, 500 within each precinct. 2022 General Election. Every time we have an election since this early voted, early voting with no excuse started back in 2020, our numbers and our predictions have shifted every single election. So, absentee in person, we had 13,100 by mail. This is also now includes our ongoing absentee ballots that are permanent. We have permanent applicants that say that I want applications mailed to me for now until the end of time, and this is what we have to abide by in accordance with Virginia election law. Virginia Election Day, we had 2,000, I'm sorry, 20,799. That's a much bigger shift than what we had projected and we expected to be at the vote center versus in person. So, we're trying to still get this number, hammer down a little bit more so that we can project for staffing. However, we are at the mercy of what the press says. So, if the press says, go to the polls on Election Day, we get more people at the polls on Election Day versus going early voting or vote by mail. And it also depends on who is saying it. So, we are directly impacted by the press. Absentee post-mail, that is how many ballots we received after seven, that were mailed after seven, I'm sorry, before 7:00 PM on Election Day and received before noon on the third day after the election. So, we had 165 of those, whether they be military that were coming from Antarctica or someplace that was a local mailer. We still had 165. Provisional, we had 308. We now have to do same-day registration for voters in accordance with Virginia election law. 308 is how many we accepted from voters, and we counted just over 220 of those. Overall actual, we had 59.24% in my projection. I always do a projection up on my board in my office, well before any, in advance of any election, and my projection was 60%, so not too shabby. I've been off less than 3% on my last six election projections. Ballot drop locations. There are two of these here that are required by law to have, and that is the top one and the bottom one. The Office of Elections and our vote center, we had 503 ballots that were dropped off from those mailed ballots, and they were dropped off at the ballot drop box that is located in our lobby. We also have the library at Croker. Abram Frink is not correct. We actually have since moved to here, Building F, and this is a little bit more convenient for those that are located in the south end of the county. And we had a total of 10 ballots for the 10 days. That takes two staff members to go in the morning to open up those, the one from each party, to open up, to make sure there weren't any ballots in advance in the box, and then to go at 5:00 PM to sit and wait. As soon as 5:00 PM hits, we close the bins, we put a bar across, and we lock them in each of the locations. These locations are under camera surveillance at all times, but the 10 people for the 10 days has caused the Electoral Board to unanimously decide to discontinue the drop-off locations for the 10 days prior. Virginia election law says it's actually up to the Director of Elections. While I respect their vote of just stopping or ceasing this, the 10 days, I do feel that it is very important that we have this at minimum for the presidential election so that we can have larger possibilities for dropping off the ballots, just because the numbers are so much higher than what it is for a standard election year. So, it is still yet to be decided, but I am absolutely heeding their advice to discontinue the 10 days of satellite locations. When I go to calculate out the total for these 10 ballots, it comes up to about $50 a ballot that it costs for us to collect them from these locations on a daily basis. Polling places on Election Day, we are required by law to have a drop location in each of these precincts, and in the past, we had, it was a canvas bag that had a shoulder strap, and it kind of looked like it was extremely mobile. And it did not set well with me, but we had less than two weeks to order these during the presidential election. So, since we've had time, and since we've had time to research this, we have gone through, and you see the metal box there. It is a large enough slit for the ballot to be dropped horizontally vertically, and it is locked, and that key is in the presence of our office, and we do have runners throughout the day to go collect those. On this election, on, in November, we had 14 of those, and we only have 18 precincts. So, it was an interesting turnout to see what the statistics actually are for these locations. Organizational chart. I am so thankful that we have additional staff that we have been granted. I continue to request two more staff members, and you'll see the Electoral Board. We do have one here today, Kurt Stolt. He is our newest board member, and I am appointed by the Electoral Board for a three-year term, and then I am reappointed after those three years each time. Chief Deputy Director, that is a new position as of this year, and I am so thankful for it because it's really helped us make sure that we have our organizational layout set up and ready to go. The Front Desk Assistant, we had a part-time person, and we gave that up this year so that we could have an absentee coordinator in order to accommodate all of those thousands of voters that we have to do as an ongoing thing. Then we have voter registration, Infrastructure Coordinator, and then finally, I will be, or I am asking for a Training Staffing Coordinator, and that, I don't think that we need this year or next year, but that is still on the horizon. We have ballot drop-off, cap pre-processing, our vote center, and absentee by mail. We have a lot of moving parts all at once, and I like to liken it during the election season that we have four individual storefronts that we have to work with during the 45 days. Emergency planning. A lot of people say, oh, my gosh, Diana, you're planning for a lot of things that haven't happened yet. And then I go and plan, and I plan, and I plan, and I plan, and thank goodness that we planned, because we had, back in October 28th, I will say that I ended up having to have emergency brain surgery, and that was actually on November 3rd, and I was left five days before an election that we had to run, and I was still in ICU at that point. So, I would like to give a huge shout-out to the JCC Bruton Volunteer Fire Department, York County Fire Rescue, for actually saving my life, and the Department of Elections actually gave their second person in charge for the Department of Elections up in Richmond, they actually sent him down to our office, and he came and helped work as the director to help guide the Elections Office. And he, I always say, if you want to be tested as to whether you have a good running office, you go out the week that something huge is happening, and you see how it's run. And we were given complete accolades on how the office is run. We do have the continuity of operations. There was not one hiccup or delay in anything that we had to do, backup staffing, training, and teamwork. We do a weekly staff meeting, and that really, truly has saved us. So, I appreciate everybody, and it ran like clockwork, and if I didn't stand here and say this today, nobody would have ever known that that happened, because we did run such a smooth and secure election, even with my absence. Security intimidation threats. If you think that this is not happening on your doorstep, you would be completely wrong. I'm not going to talk about much of it, but I will say that we are at 29 threats right now. I am at 29 threats. My family, my home address is listed. I, my entire family that has no name that is even listed, that has the same name as me, are listed as threats. So, it is happening here. I do not tolerate it, and man, oh, man, it gets my goat when you see a family member's name listed. So, would I do it again from this instance that this happened? Absolutely. Am I sorry that this happened? I am sorry that these, that the First Amendment is being weaponized, but I am not sorry that I stood up for Virginia election law and for the voters to have safe places to go and vote, and I am not sorry that we have election officers that were being protected from being intimidated. So, I do thank the Police Department and Chair, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens, for coming over that day to help us, but it was incredible. I'm still getting the threats, and I don't think that this will stop, because it'll rear its head again when we start actively voting, but it's real. What's Ahead. You look at these letters, and you say, what in the world are these letters? The letters represent every month between now and 2024 of December. Every one of those black or rectangles that you see are early voting months. We are nonstop voting or in a quarantine period for our voting equipment. We only have four months between now and December of 2024, when our office is not actively voting, when the county is not actively voting, or when we have a quarantine period. So, if we have anything to prove that we work more than two days, this right here is it. The black boxes are when we are doing early voting, and you can see that there is no downtime between each election between now and December of 2024. I would also like to point out that the staff will, and myself, will be required to work at minimum six of these states and federal holidays within this timeframe, and they do it willingly because they believe just as much as I do about fair elections in James City County and making sure that we are here and we are staffed and we are showing that we are ready for voters to be here as much as what law requires us to be. But that's pretty impactful to see those lined up and to see that we're almost in March, effectively tomorrow, so you can cross off another one of those open slots moving forward. We will be sleeping very well in December of 2024. Supply chain issues also in planning. You're going to see my budget when it's submit, or that is submitted, and you're saying, what in the world? Why is this budget going up so much? And it's because a lot of these things, we have to have a 14-weekly time. For each of those mail ballots that we did, it was 3,300, 3,300 standard packets that we have to prepare. Presidential, we went up to 14,000. Each of those requires four envelopes, and of those four envelopes, many of those take a 14-weekly time, and in the red, you see that we have to order by June 1st, which is a completely different fiscal year than when we have submitted for a budget of November 2023. Those ballots are of the, I'm sorry, the envelopes are right about $10,000 for just the envelopes themselves. And then we have the March 2024. We have to order those while we are currently, or while we are in the middle of early voting for the election before that. And then you go into June, and we're in the middle of the presidential primary, and then November, we are back into the previous election or fiscal year. So, just because we have an election in one fiscal year does not mean that all of the budget is wholly contained within that year. We are simultaneously planning for five elections at this time. And while we simultaneously plan for these five elections, we are also planning on continued interior office of election expansion phases within the building. We are on Phase Number Two or Three at this point, and we are looking to move our permanent offices upstairs, and the build-out will provide for a larger vote center on the first floor and operating space for staff on the second floor, and then also making sure that each one of these, due to the climate of elections world, we are planning on making sure that these are extremely secure locations, that they are set for emergency evacuation procedures, and that we do have the items in place to make sure that we can confidently say that our ballots are secure and are locked up in the ways that we need them by Homeland Security and what our amazing Police Department gives us advice on what to do. That concludes my presentation.
Questions?
Anybody have questions?
How many have questions? But I'm just glad to see you, glad you're doing well, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
You scared us.
Yeah.
You scared us really bad.
And I'm so happy to see you here doing this presentation. I had a couple of questions, just for, to put in scope the level of work. You had quoted the 2022 election, which was the federal non-presidential year, being at about 59 or 60%. What was the voter turnout for the presidential in '20 and then for the gubernatorial race in '21? Is it, was it higher than that, or?
Presidential always runs higher. We were right at, I, my statistics I do not have in my head. We were right at, it typically is about 80%, 82% for a presidential. The gubernatorial is the second highest in the four-year cycle that we have, and that was hovering just over 60%. So, the statistics are about the same. However, the turnout fluctuates between early voting and going to the precincts, and so that's where you see that the variance is, but that, those are about the statistics.
And what are you projecting for '23, since it's just statewide and local elections?
Well, if you've been reading the news, you see that there is a mass exodus of legislative members, and we, for this next election, last election, we had that turnout, and we only had one thing on the ballot. And this coming forward, this year coming forward, we have 19 offices that are going to be open, and that will be on the ballot. And not everybody gets to vote on the 19 offices, but that's going to be varied depending on which district each person lives in. So, I'm projecting probably right in the neighborhood of about a 65% turnout. I normally crunch my numbers in August, and we'll find out if we have a primary in, on April 6th, is the deadline for filing.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here and presenting the information. It's really very helpful, and especially glad to see you doing well and recovering very strongly.
Only 1% of the people survive what I had, so I'm happy.
That's amazing. And Mr. Stevens kept us updated on all your progress and everything else, and we're so glad to see you up here.
Thank you.
Because you and your office do a wonderful job for James City County in keeping us where we need to be, and we appreciate everything you do, and I think a lot of citizens don't know how much you go above and beyond to work and do things, and Scott's always telling us-
And, and Scott's always telling us how, you know, your budget's right on target there as far as, you know, spending your money and everything else. So you do an excellent job on that and, and trying to watch everything you can watch. And hey, we can buy it at this price and save money here. So thank you. We appreciate that very much.
I appreciate it. I pay taxes too, so I try to save what I can.
Got to keep in love.
That's right. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right, next is over to you for the tourism.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do want to introduce Vicki Semenow, who's our Executive Director of CEO of Visit Williamsburg, our official destination marketing organization for Williamsburg, Yorktown and Jamestown. Uh, she provides expertise, leadership and vision in all sales and marketing efforts, ensuring increased visitation and economic impact throughout the region. Uh, Ms. Larson is currently her chair as well, so I know she would appreciate doing the introduction. You know, the question for me, is it working? Um, and I would tell you in her direction, the destination has realized its highest hotel occupancy in more than a decade. She's been here since 2019, so that's pretty good through COVID to get us back to more than we've seen in 10 years. Expanded our market share and produced award-winning advertising campaigns. Uh, and in 2021, she was named the top 25 extraordinary minds in marketing and hospitality, or in marketing by the Hospitality and Sales and Marketing Association. So I think we have a real catch and somebody with a lot of experience involved in a lot of things, uh, nationally. And again, real excited to hear about her update today on things that are going on, their initiatives, their efforts, and really their results for Visit Williamsburg. So Vicki, all yours.
Right, over to me. Well, thank you very much and thank you for the opportunity to be here and present today. Um, just to give you a little bit of, oop, what did I just do? I canceled it out.
All right, Jason will get you.
I'm very tech savvy, I promise. All right. And so do I hit the left or the right?
Left.
Left. Okay, here we go. All right. So just as, to serve as a reminder, Visit Williamsburg or the Williamsburg Tourism Council went live on July 1 of 2018. It was created by statute for the sole purpose of marketing and promoting the area as an overnight tourism destination. Um, I joined the organization on April 15th of 2019 and less than a year later, we all were working through COVID and, and all things that came along with that. But as Scott said, I'm pleased where the organization is today and the results that we've been able to achieve. The, our primary reason to exist is to drive overnight visitation. Overnight visitors stay longer and they spend more money and that's the kind of visitor we want. Um, we are also in existence to increase tax revenue, to unify the destination under what's called a DMO or a Destination Marketing Organizations Tourism Brand and Strategy so that we all look like we're singing from the same sheet of music, and to improve reporting, analytics and data-driven optimization. As Scott mentioned, our Board of Directors is currently chaired by Ruth Larson. Um, our Board of Directors is also outlined in statute. So you see representation from Colonial Williamsburg, Cliff Fleet is our Vice Chair, City of Williamsburg, Mayor Doug Pons is our Treasurer, and of course, major attractions and associations throughout the area, Busch Gardens, Hotel Motel Association, Historic Jamestown or Jamestown Rediscovery, JYF, the Restaurant Association, York County, and we have two ex officio seats on our board. Um, Mike Rock is currently representing the, uh, Williamsburg Chamber of Commerce and Rita McLennie, who is the Executive Director of Virginia Tourism Corporation. And so just to kind of give you a little background on our creative strategy, everything that we do is rooted in data and research. So during those lockdown months of COVID, you know, we, we didn't stop. We conducted 12 different research programs, everything from visitor perception to what our brand strategy and how our campaign performs. So every marketing decision we make is rooted in data. Our creative platform is called reunite with what truly matters. And so this was applicable during those early months of COVID. It's as applicable today. And out of this creative platform, Life at Your Pace was born. The world focuses or forces us to move at a pace that doesn't always make us comfortable. We yearn to get back to our pace of life as fast or as slow as we wish. We want to get control of our lives back. Williamsburg is the place to do just that because your vacation is your vacation. You want to sleep all day and have breakfast for lunch? Go for it. You want to play golf all day, every day for an entire week? It's your vacation. You want to hop in a canoe and see where the James River takes you without a paddle? Then head to Williamsburg and experience life at your pace. So this is sort of the, the overall creative brand that we put forward. Um, we pushed out last year in February, about 45% of our advertising in 2022 kicked off in February. And you see, as the year goes on, smaller budget allocations are assigned to those later months. Our audience, uh, our target audience includes millennials and Gen Xers, both families and couples, as well as active mature couples. So multi-generational travel is certainly something that we're seeing an increase of over time. Last year, we were in 21 markets. In 2020, we launched Cleveland, Columbus and New York. And last year, we launched Boston. And so you'll see here in some of our website performance metrics, how those markets are, are doing for us. Um, just to kind of take you through a little bit about how Life at Your Pace comes to life, I'd like to share with you our television spots. All right, let's see if I can do this. And so we have three different spots for our three different kind of target personas, if you will, simple strivers, culture questers and seers and doers. Here's our next spot for you. It looks like it played the same one, but that's all right. We'll, we'll keep this going here. Can you advance to the next slide for me, please? All right, here's the next one. There you go. And so you can see we've incorporated all of the many things to see and do throughout the region. For our digital display advertising here, you can see how Life at Your Pace plays out. So leap at your pace, thrill at your pace, sip at your pace. So we're hitting everything from outdoor activities and outdoor recreation to golf, to food and beverage, and of course, our historic attributes. Here are just a couple of other examples. We do switch up our creative in the fall and holiday season. Fall, we typically kick off in around, in August and holiday in November. We, last year, launched several content partnerships, one with National Geographic. And, and the idea behind the Nat Geo partnership was to really explore, you know, the, the things that are taking place behind the living history attraction or, so it really kind of gets down to archaeology and, and the science behind what brings our attractions to life. We also launched a partnership with Golf.com. This included, um, three onsite articles, a short form video, a long form video, all intended to communicate that this area has world-class golf and could go up against the best of them like a Hilton Head. And so we're actively promoting that. In fact, in April, we will host a media reception in New York City where the feature will be golf. Of course, we'll have our food and beverage folks there and anyone from any of the major attractions who would like to attend, but to really start to push out the fact that golf is here and it's a great place for, for a golf getaway. And Bon appetit was our third content partnership that we, that we pushed out this last year. Uh, this was great. We brought a foodie influencer in from New York City to visit 12 of our different, um, food and beverage outlets, including the winery, brewery, um, breweries throughout the area and certainly restaurants. And so this really again helps put us on the map as far as a foodie destination is concerned. We work with social media influencers. We work with everybody from celeb types like Sean Johnson, the former Olympian, who has several million followers on Instagram, to local social media micro-influencers who can tell, you know, from a local's perspective, the things to see and do and, and the fun to be had throughout the area. And we even bring famous dogs to the area to show just how pet-friendly Williamsburg is as a travel destination. There's just some great examples of some of the social media posts that took place as a result of hosting these various social media influencers. We also run Out of Home. So so far, you've seen our digital, you've seen our TV, you've seen our content partnerships, you see what we do with our social media influencer program. Out of Home is a great way for what's called upper funnel awareness or building the brand in some of our newer markets. So we're running Out of Home in places like New York, Boston, Cleveland. Um, we did run some in Washington DC because we want to retain that market share. Now that travel has opened up, DC will always sort of be our bread and butter, but we want to keep them coming back too. So, so we did launch Out of Home in that market as well. And here are just some great examples of, you know, you're walking through town in New York City and you come across one of our Visit Williamsburg advertisements. Um, Life at Your Pace then trickles into our sales collateral as well. So it's not just your traditional advertising where you'll find Life at Your Pace. You'll also find it in our sales promotions. From a sales aspect, we're focused on getting, um, group tour here, meetings, business travel, certainly sports travel is important to this destination. And so explore at your pace, travel at your pace, discover at your pace. That brand platform trickles into everything that we do, even our booth. We have a cooperative marketing program. You might remember, um, just at the beginning of my presentation, I did mention that one of our strategic goals is to unify the destination under the Life at Your Pace brand. And so we offer a one-to-one match for a cooperative marketing program. We have four partners and you can see sort of how that plays out, um, here on the right-hand side of the screen. So, you know, for, we have programs that go from $2,500 to $25,000 and we will match the investment of any of our hospitality partners throughout the region. 2022, from an advertising highlight, we saw a 104% increase in broadcast impressions. We, um, with the launch of Boston and New York, we generated more than 100 million impressions in those markets alone. So you can see here that as we kind of turned the faucets on, we did achieve increases in site sessions and, um, visits to our blog. It's called the Williams Blog. And if you haven't checked it out, you should. Lots of great information there. Our website performance, we continue to kind of knock it out of the park here. And I think the really important number to, to keep in mind is that 82% of the visitors to visitwilliamsburg.com are new visitors to the website. So certainly we're building awareness with a new audience. And in some of our new markets, you can see here, New York in 2022 was up nearly 450% over 2019 as far as visits to the website. Um, or organic search, which is just people going into Google and typing in Visit Williamsburg, probably because they saw one of our television commercials or our out-of-home advertising increased 35% over 2019. So here you can see Cleveland nearly 500% up, Boston 333% up. And so significant increases in these new markets. And you can see here where organic search really tends to peak. So the second we turn on our advertising, you see those jumps. Or the second we shift in some of our advertising, you see those jumps. And so this is just a nice chart to show you, yeah, marketing works. But at the end of the day, we know that the ad campaign is performing well. We've won more than 12 advertising awards for Life at Your Pace over the course of the last two years. But when the rubber meets the road, how are we performing? Are we achieving our business goal, which is to increase overnight visitation? And you can see here, as we started to close out 2022, the answer is yes. We were just shy of 2019 levels as far as occupancy was concerned. And I'd like to remind you that 2019 was the best year that the destination had seen since 2007. So it, as that is our benchmark, obviously 2022 is, is a strong year for us. Average daily rate, our hotel rates continue to be at all-time high, as does our revenue per available room. So when you look at 2022 as a whole, we were just shy, 0.5% shy of 2019 levels, which is exceptional considering that in 2022, we had three categories of traveler missing from the equation. So this is pure leisure travel for the most part. We, we had not seen significant gains in group tour in 2022. International travel was all but nonexistent, as was business travel. It started to come back towards the end of the year, but considering that we literally had one out of four categories of traveler functioning in 2022, and we were just shy of those 2019 levels. That said, our rate was 18% over 2019 and our revenue was about 16% over 2019. Um, our top origin markets by visitation here, you can see as I mentioned, and, and a visitor is someone who travels more than 50 miles to get to a tourism destination. And this is, um, organized by designated market area. So Richmond, Claxton High, as does Washington DC. The headline on this slide is that New York has crept up the list in 2022. And we just launched that market not that long ago. So that's significant. What are visitors spending their money on while they're here? Well, what you would assume, arts and entertainment, accommodations, food and beverage and outdoor recreation are, are the biggies. We're able to track household income levels of our visitor through credit card, um, information via affinity. And you can see here that the vast majority of our visitors have a household income of 100K or more. So all of that being said, we also want to measure if Visit Williamsburg did not exist, what kind of visitor spending would not exist. So we work with an outfit called Smari Insights out of Indianapolis. Uh, they work with more than 30 destination marketing organizations and state tourism offices. And we do, on an ongoing basis, a return on investment study. We pull about 1,700 folks in our designated market areas that match the criteria of our target audience. You can see here that, um, as the year went on in 2022, ad awareness continued to creep up, particularly in our newer markets like Boston and New York. Um, we, we also know that advertising influenced the length of stay, the number of activities that visitors do while they're here. They have a higher spend and they have a higher trip satisfaction. So those exposed to our advertising stay longer, spend more, do more. Here you can see our ad impact on our image. So those who were unaware of our advertising ranked us low in several categories, and those are the orange categories here. So, um, that said, those who were aware of our advertising have a much improved opinion on things to see and do, a place with forward thinking, a place with Black History sites and landmarks. Uh, so you can see that, you know, not only are we influencing visitor spend, we're influencing perception of the destination. At the end of the day, our advertising influenced close to 432,000 trips, which generated $432 million in spending and a return on investment of $73 for every dollar that we invested in media. So this number measures, the people who hadn't considered Williamsburg as a travel destination, saw one of our advertisers. as a travel destination, saw one of our advertisements, and then went on to book travel. So this number would not exist if Visit Williamsburg did not exist in its current iteration. So looking ahead, 2023, very excited. We're going to evolve some of those historic markets for us. We're going to lean into what's called travel endemic. So that's the TripAdvisor of the world. We really want to drive that overnight visitation in some of our stronger or our markets that we've been in for many more years than like the New York and Boston group. And cookie list expansion is something that we need to pay attention to. So cookies are how we measure. If you, you know, Googled Williamsburg, you will get served up a Williamsburg advertisement. Cookies are going away, and that's being driven by the federal government. Right now, the date is 2024. So we're working towards what does life look like without being able to say, Joe clicked on a Visit Williamsburg ad and went on to book either a hotel or a flight. So that tracking mechanism, we're working with partners to find new ways to track visitor behavior. I'm excited to say that this year, we launched our ad effort a full six weeks earlier than we have traditionally. We launched it right on January 2. We know that if we don't have a strong spring break, that really impacts the rest of the year. So large percentage of our budget right up front in the first four months of the year. And as 2022, that number and allocation goes down as you get through the remainder of the year. But we do have a solid 25% of our budget that is focused on fall and holiday. And so we're going to saturate, we're going to influence, we're going to establish some of those new markets, and we're going to maintain the markets that we've been in historically. Our audience remains the same. Again, active, mature couples, and then Gen Xers and Millennials, both with and without children. And here you can see TV launched right away, connected TV launched right away, Out of Home, that started to hit in the middle of January. So that's those outside advertisements and subway advertisements that I mentioned. And you can see here, we have a year-long program for a big chunk of our tactical plan here. We launched a $13.6 million advertising effort in January, and you can see that both digital media and linear or traditional TV make up the bulk of that buy. All right. And so with that, if you are still awake, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I thought it was very interesting. Thank you for that. And I know Ms. Larson appreciates all the work you do. She enjoys working with you. And I was happy to see by the chart, the numbers that had dropped significantly in 2020. What a rebound you all have made. You've worked very hard to adjust that because our local revenues also depend on these items. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I had a question related to hotel occupancy. You know, I think we were at 50%. I guess that's a year-round for a year-long figure.
That was, yeah.
Okay. So obviously you've got some dead times and you've got some higher peak times, but year-round, that's... How does that compare to a lot of the other destination markets? Historically, it seems like we have always had a much lower occupancy. And I don't know whether it's because, you know, the argument could be that we were overbuilt for hotels. Are we? Or is there a realistic opportunity to actually fill more of them? And how do we compare to the other markets?
Well, it depends which destinations we're looking at within our comp set. So Gettysburg, we're competitive with them. Charleston, South Carolina, they're at 98% occupancy. And so it really does vary. And a lot of that has to do with the product and marketing budgets, too. Now, pre-pandemic, my goal, four years into this job, was to be, you know, the 60% range. So a solid 3% to 5% increase year-over-year each year. I'm going to knock on wood, we're off to a strong start in 2023. And so I'm hoping we get to 55% this year. Yeah. Sure.
And I was just wondering if you have a sense of the composition of the visitor in terms of where they're staying, in terms of, you know, hotels versus short-term rentals versus, you know, the timeshares?
Timeshares are challenging to measure. And I think every destination on the planet has that same struggle where Star report data, it's fairly consistent. You have the same properties reporting in every month where timeshares are a little different. We do use a program similar to Star called Air DNA to try and measure that. But Air DNA only measures the timeshares that are posted on a third-party site like an Airbnb. And so it doesn't account for, I mean, it's a small percentage, we know, of the actual number of timeshares in the destination. That being said, if I had to make a gut check, it's probably 50/50 between timeshares and hotels. Because timeshares, you know, you can, you have the two bedrooms, you have the kitchen. And so in particular during spring break or the summer season. And then as the seasons change and our audiences change and our visitor changes, where it goes from families to a lot of couples, then that hotel stay goes up. They don't, so, does that answer your question?
It does. I know it's a challenge to figure out. But, you know, when you've got a sort of uneven distribution of hotel properties versus timeshares, and it's a challenge to figure out...
Yeah, there really isn't a perfect reporting system in place for timeshares.
That's not something that you would track through surveys of visitors in, who actually come to the area?
We haven't in the past, but that's certainly something that we could, you know, think about doing because we do these return on investment ad effectiveness studies on an ongoing basis throughout the year. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
On that same thing, the, you know, some of these other is when, like Mr. Eisenhower was saying, the hotels and where we're at with those. But it may be that some of these areas that are a little bit more booked than the hotels may not have the timeshares that we have. And it'd be interesting to know, you know, how does that affect our hotels?
Sure.
When we're kind of split, where some others may not have the timeshares and may just have hotels. So it looks like they're putting more heads and beds in the hotels.
You know, and it could very well be the case. And I think the difference between us and other destinations in some cases, too, is that the hotel product is just very different.
Yeah.
Where, you know, we have a small number of four and five-star properties, where Charleston, for example, has a high number of four and five-star properties and boutique properties. And so we're, our DNA is wildly different from a lot of destinations around the country, for sure.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peggy.
All right.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for spending time with us. All right. Next, we'll move into D, which is our consent calendar. And our consent calendar consists of acceptance of funding for 4,632 Virginia Forfeit Assistant Shares Program, approval for the limited-term Family Service Specialist Program, authorization to enter into a settlement agreement for Settlers Market, contract award of $79,600 for emergency medical dispatch, electronic guides, card system replacement, grant award of $32,607 for Circuit Court Records Preservation Program, grant award for $47,797 for the Commonwealth's Attorney v. Stop Grant Program Funding, grant award for $200,000 for Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, a lease agreement with the James City County Service Authority for 109 Tuning Road, a lease agreement with Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation, minutes adoption, participation, and proposed settlement of opioid-related crisis, residential impact, and a resolution of Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance violation at 5209 seen at court. Anyone wish to pull any of them, or may I have a motion?
To a brief.
Motion on the floor. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next, board discussions. FY 2023 fiscal update and FY 2024 budget discussion. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman of the Board, members of the board. With us today is Ms. Holland, who is James City County's new Budget Manager. She and I are going to tag-team this presentation with Ms. Holland covering the 2023, our current fiscal year financial update, and I will follow her providing a 2024 budget update. With that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Sharon. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. I'm Sharon Holland, Cheryl Holland, excuse me. And today I'll provide an update on the county's finances for FY 23. This slide, you can see here, presents information on FY 23 revised budget as well as actual revenues through December of 2022. Information on fiscal year 2022, actual revenues through December is also provided for comparative purposes. Now, the FY 23 adopted budget was $217 million. There have been revisions to that budget over the fiscal year for uses of fund balance. And I will discuss those a little bit more detail briefly. First, we'll talk about our recurring revenue sources. General property taxes is our largest revenue source, representing 2/3 of our total revenues. This category includes real estate and personal property taxes. Now, most of that year-over-year increase relates to real estate taxes. FY 23 real estate revenues reflect the real statement, excuse me, the real estate reassessment, but they also reflect the board's decision to provide relief to taxpayers, decreasing the tax rate to 83 cents. The remainder of the increase relates to personal property. In this area, the board also provided relief by reducing the assessment to 75% for calendar year 2022. Now, for both real estate and personal property taxes, we have two main tax due dates. That's December 5 and June 5. So looking at these December 2022 numbers, we really do have a good halfway point as to how our revenues are doing as of the middle of the fiscal year. Now, our other revenue line items do not have the same billing or collection frequency as general property taxes. For example, other local taxes, that includes local sales tax, which we collect two months in arrears. Similarly, excise taxes for meals and lodging, we receive those one month in arrears. This means that the December numbers here only represent four or five months of these particular types of revenues. I'll note as well that the county's business license taxes are only billed once per fiscal year, and that due date is March 1 tomorrow. So we'll have an update on that revenue type when we present the third quarter data later this fiscal year. Looking at the other revenues, you can see that miscellaneous and transfers included about 1.3 million for actuals this year, and that was due to a property sale earlier this fiscal year. And lastly, on that fund balance line, you can see that the county has used about 14.2 million of fund balance so far. Excuse me. And that is primarily for support of CIP, our year-end spending plan with the schools, and as well as support for outstanding purchase orders from the prior year. Now, FY 22 use of fund balance included similar uses, but it also had about $7 million for the Courthouse Green property purchase. So that's what that 21 million reflects in FY 22. And because fund balance is not a recurring revenue source, we did provide those year-over-year changes in red at the bottom, you can see there. And that excludes fund balance, just so that you can see the changes in our recurring revenue types. Now, moving to the expenditure side. All things being equal, if we incurred our expenses evenly as we went through the fiscal year, we'd be about the 50% point as of December 2022. But as you can see on this slide, we're right at about 52%. And you can see the contributions and transfers line item is really contributing to that, to the kind of skewing in our overall percentage. And we'll talk about specific departments, though, on the next slide. So this line graph presents the department's individual spending through December 2022 in that, in that blue line. And you can also see the green baseline, that 50% benchmark through December 2022. For most of the departments, you can see they're, they're underneath that 50% benchmark. But for those areas that are above 50%, information technology, for instance, they incur a number of their expenses at the beginning of the fiscal year. Our software subscription providers require that we pay certain amounts upfront. So that's why, that's why they have more upfront expenditures at the beginning of the year. Also, our contribution and transfers, that includes our contributions to outside agencies, most of which we fund at the beginning of the fiscal year. Also in that category are transfers to our other funds, most of which we make in July. So the information on these slides really presents our information on general fund revenues and expenditures for FY 23 through December 2022. If you have any questions on FY 23, I'm happy to answer those now.
Just two quick ones, maybe. I note that community development was only at 45%. And then on schools, which was down at 46%, is that due to the school calendar, which loads more toward the second half of the year?
Yes, it has a few parts. In terms of that school piece, we do make monthly payments for operating expenses to the schools, and that's the same amount every month. But we also transfer to our debt service related to the schools for school-related bonds. And those payments are also picked up there in that school division piece. And we transfer for school debt service as we make those debt service payments. And those are made twice a year, primarily in December and June. So you'll see that number bump up towards the end of the fiscal year.
On the community development?
In community development, I know that they also have several expenditures that they incur towards the end of the fiscal year as well. Absolutely. Are there any other questions? I will turn things over to Sharon for our FY 24 budget.
Good afternoon again. I wanted to just take an opportunity to update you on the current development of next year's budget for fiscal year 2024. First fiscal year 2024, of course, is the second year of our two-year budget. Fiscal year 2024 is a non-reassessment year for real estate. So that means any new revenue that we may project in that area would solely be due to any new development or new construction activity. We are also working on our five-year capital improvement program. So that would include years 2024 through 2028. There are several new projects that are included in that CIP, both on the county side as well as the school side. We are, of course, dealing with cost escalations, which I know you've heard throughout the year as we've been approving contracts. And we're also going through our analysis of our pay-go projects versus borrowing considerations. When it comes to borrowing, we're looking at our capacity to borrow within our fiscal policies. We're also looking at our ability to borrow, meaning how much can we afford? We're looking at what current debt we have and what, what debt may be coming offline, which opens up some ability to pay. We're also now looking at the interest rates quite a bit. We're pursuing some alternative funding sources, short-term borrowings, interest-only payments, that type of thing, just as other options, waiting for the market to maybe restabilize. In terms of the major considerations for next year, school funding is always a priority. Of course, they represent over half of our budget. Also, the CIP funding for the reasons that I mentioned before. Employee compensation is something we also continue to struggle with. We are in an inflationary environment, so we're seeing that not only in the cost of our staff, but also in our non-personnel cost, in particular fuel. And then, of course, the state budget is also challenging us this year. In terms of the progress that we have made to date, we have been working with Human Resources on the new personnel request for next year. That includes requests for new positions. It also includes any compensation adjustments for reclassifications. That process began in the fall. We've had several meetings with our departments as well as county admin, county admin and human resources to go over the requests and just to get more details as well. We do continue to struggle with recruitment and retention across the board. We are starting to see some improvement in some areas, but we also have a few that are still very challenged. In terms of the CIP requests, those have also been received. Those have been submitted to the Policy Committee of the Planning Commission. They've had a number of meetings, and they will be sending their recommendations over to us. to us and county admin very soon. That includes their ranking of those projects in terms of how they comply with our comprehensive plan and our strategic plan. The operating requests have been received and reviewed. Those come, of course, from the departments. County Administration, HR, and Finance have met with the departments just to get more detail and go a little bit deeper into their budget requests. We've also received the outside agency funding requests. They're struggling with a lot of the same things we are, cost escalations, personnel increases, that type of thing. And then revenue projections are underway. I have performed two analyses. The first one I did was for the six months of this year. I am currently updating it again for the eight months of this year, year-to-date activity. Unfortunately, the State General Assembly has not done me any favors. As you know, they did not come to consensus on passing a budget, and I don't believe that they reconvene until the end of March or April. So, it's likely we'll be moving forward without any specific guidance. We do have general guidance, and that is usually what we rely on and just continue to follow things over the next few months. And finally, I just want to mention a couple of the key dates in this budget cycle. Of course, a couple of things that have already happened. Back on January the 10th, we had our pre-budget public hearing. Tonight, we're before you, giving you an update on this year, as well as just a status update. On March the 10th, you'll have your retreat. March 27th, the county administrator is scheduled to release his proposed budget. On April 6th, we have a community meeting planned. We have a public hearing planned on April the 11th. We have a budget business meeting also planned on April 25th, and currently, we are scheduled to come before you for the budget adoption on May the 9th. And that concludes my remarks. Happy to answer or address any questions, concerns you may have.
The, the April 6th community meeting, do you have a location set yet for that, or?
Yes, I believe that's going to occur here. It'll be here, and it will also, of course, be virtual as well for viewers.
Thank you.
And a time on that?
4:00 P.M. It's different than our normal, 4:00 P.M., yes.
Excuse me, I've got it listed as 6:00 on my calendar, but I thought it was 4:00 as well.
We'll get that clarified.
What day of the week is, is that?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Any other questions? All right, next we'll move into Board considerations. Nothing there, and Board requests and directives?
So, I know we had spoken at one time about updating our comprehensive plan in terms of short-term rentals with, in terms of state, was it state code that changed or law that changed with people living on site? I wanted to make sure that we're on track to take care of that.
I did send something to the Board, Ms. Sadler, about a, a case that came out of a different circuit than, than one in Virginia, but one that a federal court pretty firmly rebuked, a, the city of New Orleans' requirement that there be a resident in every Airbnb, and it was something that I recommended the Board at least reconsider whether or not that's something that we want to require. And that's, that's in the comp plan. That's something that you could amend the comp plan, or it's something that the Board, and I think it'd probably be preferred by planning that the Board adopt a resolution or give us some sort of formal guidance as to whether or not to continue to apply that to future Airbnb applications.
So, would that be something that we would do during a Board discussion, perhaps, or at our retreat, or?
Either one is fine. Ms. Sadler.
We'll talk through that and get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. John?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick things. Wanted to mention that I, I know that with the Chairman and Mr. Eisenhower, I attended the Black History event, and we had, were very much entertained and informed by Kristi Coleman of the Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation, who did an excellent job of talking about her role and the role of museums and, and a number of interesting other sidelights to her discussion. Also, that I attended a, a, a display of plans that Escalante is proposing for the Kingsmill area to, to get feedback from the community, and appreciated hearing about their intentions, and they, they made it very clear that this was the first iteration of what they're thinking about, and the reason they wanted to hold the event was to get some feedback from the community before moving forward. They held three separate events, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, and one in the evening for folks to attend, and I think the total attendance was probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 600 or 700 residents, so quite, quite extensive involvement there. And I did just want to make a reference to one other matter, and that is that in the last couple of days, legislature, as legislature's been finishing up their regular session, a number of legislators have announced their intentions not to seek reelection this year, and in particular, we are affected by that. First of all, Delegate Mullen announced on, on the day that his, his child passed away that it was his intention not to run for another term in the House of Delegates. And then, on Sunday, Senator Normant, who is the Senate Minority Leader, announced his intention to retire from the General Assembly as well. And I did just want to make note of the important role that, that both of these individuals have played. Delegate Mullen's taken on a number of, of very important issues to, to bring to the public's attention in a relatively short career in the General Assembly, but one which, in which he's made an impact. Senator Normant has obviously been in the, in the state senate for a long time and has a wealth of knowledge of the way in which the institution operates and an unusual ability to get things done. And whether you agree with him or not on particular issues, nobody can deny his sense of the legislative process, his skill at maneuvering through it, and his tendency to be able to deliver on what he wants to achieve. And I think we have to recognize that James City County will have lost some significant influence, that we're going to have to work hard to make sure that our new representatives, whoever they may prove to be, will have that same kind of skill and ability. And we do have some other folks who represent us in the General Assembly, Delegate Batten and Senator Mason, both will have parts of James City County in, in their constituencies, and we will depend on them to make sure that our community is well represented in Richmond. But it is a sea change in Richmond, and we're going to be in the wake, so.
All right, County Administrator.
Mr. Chair, no report today.
Okay. All right, next, need to go into closed session. Discussion on the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidding and efforts, and discussion on the terms and scope of such contracts where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of a public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Code of Virginia pertaining to requests for a proposal resulting before an after-school summer camp program. And next, consideration of public matter for the appointment of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia pertaining to Board of Zoning Appeals. May I have a motion? Motion? Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only discuss those items we indicated we would speak about during our closed session.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, I would like to make a motion to recommend to the Circuit Court judge that we-- that he reappoint William J. Geib and Mr. Mark Jacobowski to an additional term on the Board of Zoning Fields.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, then I'll need a motion for adjournment until 8:00 a.m. on March 10, 2023 for the board retreat.
Motion.
Motion? Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
All right. We're done.